So this is our first meeting, post-town meeting or elections. And so tonight, it's a little different format. It's the organizational meeting for the Select Board where they're going to nominate their chair, a vice chair, a parliamentarian, and a board secretary. So at this time, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion that Dick Coombs be chairman.
Mary Lee's made a motion that Dick Coombs be chairman.
I'll second it.
And Bob Spalding seconded him. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Call the vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hope so. So four to zero, and motion passes. And I turn the floor to you now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll entertain a nomination for vice chair.
I make a nomination that Bob Spalding be vice chair.
I have a nomination for Bob Spalding for vice chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recuse myself.
Excuse me, Dick?
Yes.
Who made the second mark, or Rob?
Rob.
Rob Steele.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations. You are now vice chair.
Thank you.
I'll go over with you. There's a couple of meetings I won't be here at.
We've got to go over that.
So we'll make sure that you know what those are.
Yes.
But we're not talking until July.
Okay.
Okay, we need a nomination for the post of parliamentarian.
I'd like to nominate Mark Brown.
I have a nomination. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations for parliamentarian? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Mr. Brown, do you know what parliamentarian does?
I am not aware of all of these.
Primary duty is...
Mr. Mark. Next round on the table.
Well, the primary duty is to make sure we behave ourselves and to interpret any rules if we have questions about rules of procedure.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can we get him the little book? I can put my hands on it at home, probably, but...
The Rules of Rules?
Yeah, yeah, is that what?
Yeah, I think Karen made a copy for, I think, maybe Mr. Brown. And did you get a hard copy of it?
It's a book about that thick, though.
Like the handbook?
Oh, yeah. I'm looking at the Rules of Rules of Regulations, just so Mark has it.
This was all, that was all we got.
Okay.
I'll get that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think the DCP handbook.
Okay. This little book is about this tall, and it's about that thick.
And it's full of...
Actually, don't take away from anything, but I found it was much easier to just go online.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, yeah, I guess you can bring it to the meeting online.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it doesn't come up much, anyway, so fortunately, or hopefully, if we behave ourselves. Okay, I need a nomination for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Mary Lee Harris.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a nomination and a second for Mary Lee Harris to be secretary of the Select Board. All in favor?
Aye.
You haven't asked discussion yet.
Oh, boy. Here we go.
I was clerk last year, not secretary.
It's the same post.
Okay, but I was clerk last year, not secretary.
Okay, can I nominate Mary Lee Harris to be secretary slash clerk? Can we change that? Should we change it?
I don't see why not. Will you change your second?
And here's the secretary.
I saw that.
So we have a, we have a change in our motion for Mary Lee Harris to be secretary slash clerk. All in favor?
Ayes.
Aye?
Aye.
I choose myself.
Okay, now we have to adopt a resolution for the meeting day and time. The resolution states that we will be meeting on the second, fourth, Monday of the month at 7:00 PM in this building unless otherwise posted. Do I have a nominate or a motion to accept that resolution?
You have a motion to accept the meeting day and time as written.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second for the resolution for meeting day and time. Any discussion?
What time do the meetings usually get out?
Yes. Typically before nine, but not always.
Okay, so you don't think it's necessary to start at 6:30?
I don't think, no, I do not. We occasionally will run late and occasionally actually get done early, but not often. It's usually right around nine, don't you think?
Usually.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I think that you also have the Board of Sewer Commissioners meetings before them sometimes, and it pushed that way too early if the meeting was earlier than 7:00 PM.
When we have the Board of Commissioner meetings, we usually start them at 6:30, and that goes till 7:00, and then we do the rest.
We have been known to start a sewer commissioner meeting prior to that even if we thought it was going to take more than an hour, or more than half an hour. So I haven't called a question yet, have I? You have not. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass this around while we're moving on, all right? Rules of procedure? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
I'll second it for discussion.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the rules of procedure for the Town of Castleton Select Board. Apparently you have discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm listening.
On the second page, number two, this is to be posted in the Castleton Post Office, Bonneseen, Hydeville, Junior's, Breverage, King, Lakes Region Laundromat. Nothing is said about our website being posted. This is... Again, on two further down, it doesn't say the website.
We normally do that. Go ahead and speak to that.
If you want to make that correction, say you approve it as is, as presented with the addition of that, and you sign it, this is a separate page, so we can correct it and still post it as you've made your motion. Because it does say on the town, if the town has a, like a town office or town clerk's office, they insist on clerk's office. It's in there, and no one can say that, I guess it wasn't.
I'm being picky.
The only reservation I would have is I do know state statute requires us to physically post it in three or more locations. Is that correct?
Prominent, yeah.
Prominent locations, and it does not require us to put it on our website, although I think we shouldn't, we normally do. The only reservation I might have is if we have some special meeting, and the timing is such that it doesn't get posted on the website, then this could open us up to a liability. I don't know if that's really worth worrying about, but I wanted to throw that out there so everyone could think about it.
I would think if you had time to print out papers and hang them around town, that you would have time to put them on the website.
I think the only time that would apply is on the emergency meeting where you don't have to have the 24-hour notice. This does cover the special meetings, so there would be a 24-hour notice. So we would have, we would have to post that one anyway, but the emergency meeting would be different. And it doesn't include emergency meetings in there, so it's a moot point.
So we can, I'm certainly not opposed to the addition. I just wanted to throw that out there so everyone would think about it. Okay, so, Mr. Town Manager, can you add in there that it will be on the town website as well?
What is? I'm sorry, I should have read the very last sentence. And also post it on www.castletonbt. That is our website.
Okay, that also would have to be down number two later, then. The second number two for special meetings.
Okay, I agree with that. You got that, Mike?
I have it.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, I'll call this question to approve this as amended, and then Mr. Jones will have to circulate a copy in the town office for us to sign. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call the question unless there's any more discussion. All in favor of the rules of procedure as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda is the conflict of interest policy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the conflicts of interest in ethical conduct as printed.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the policy regarding conflict of interest in ethical conduct as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have one to sign. So where's the resolution for meeting time? Is that being circulated still?
It's right next to Mary Lee, and she hasn't signed it yet. And you got these two to chip around right here.
There's the original.
Yeah, but we got the...
Those are copies.
Yeah, I know, but you, do you have both of them? Do you have the rules of procedure and the town conflict of interest?
Actually, the rules of procedure has to get amended, so that doesn't get circulated today.
Okay, okay.
This one does. It's back in the blue folder.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Hey, between two of us, we'll get this right, right? Well, let's hope so.
Jeez.
So if you could pass that around, I will. So this is the one we have to update. So that will stay in there. Bear with me, folks, we're still learning how to do this. Okay, I think we're ready to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion or amendments or changes? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of February 26, 2024.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the minutes. Any discussion?
I have one, I need a little correction.
That's more than I found.
I hate to even say it. On the second page, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, line down, J-mark, stated in the past that one of last meeting, it should be one of the last meetings.
Where is that, Mary Lee?
It's on page four.
At one of the last meetings.
Page four, Nick, you want to just...
Page four, right there.
Oh, okay.
I almost hate to even say it.
Do I need to abstain from this since we weren't on the board last week, our last meeting?
Here's a couple of ways of looking at that. If you were here, present at the meeting, and you agree with these minutes, I see no reason why you can't vote on them.
Okay.
If you were in the building, you were sitting right there. Mark, you were sitting there. You can either abstain or you can vote yes or no. Any more discussion on these minutes?
Yeah, I want to ask the parliamentarian if, I'm going to put you on the spot, is that kosher, that you do that, that we do that? Do you know? I've just...
Just look it up before the next meeting.
I don't think there's anything that prohibits it.
Okay, okay, okay. I didn't mean to do that to you, but I did.
Even if Rob and I don't vote, you still have enough votes.
Yeah, no, it's okay, you can vote.
I wouldn't feel that way if they were not present.
No, that's true.
Since they were in the room.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, citizens' comments and concerns, items that are not on the agenda. We have one, Mary. Can you come up to the podium, please?
Before we proceed, has anybody who has not signed the visitor, the signing list, please do so as you leave? Thank you, sorry, Mary. No worries. Hi, Mary Droge, Castleton, Pencamell Road. I just have two quick questions. I'm just always looking for updates. I know CBS is on the agenda a little bit later, so just tell me if this is on the agenda. I'm curious just if there's any update on the hail proposal for CBS that you can share with the public.
I will share that we spoke to, that the town manager spoke to Zach as recently as, what, a day or two ago, or yesterday, today?
I didn't, I emailed him, I got a response back today.
And basically, Zach has gotten little or no traction with the college pursuing the wrestling program at that building, so at this point in time, there's been no motion on that. No forward motion.
So no purchase and sale agreement?
Not even close at this point.
Thank you. And maybe this is coming up later, but always looking for updates on the grants, the two grants.
Feasibility study number two, we weren't approved for the first one, I said that last meeting.
What?
For the feasibility study for the...
Oh, right.
And we, so we applied for the second one, and we won't know until sometime later in March if we were approved for that.
And that's the one that we're talking about on the agenda? Okay. And how's the heating and cooling windows in board, the big ones? Any update on that?
They said they're about two months behind. They're, they're working on November right now, so, for some of them, but he said, I expect it's going to be a two-month delay on getting a response. Now, is what we're talking about...
Did you say November?
They're working, they're working on November right now, but he said we're two weeks, or two months behind. Allison, we're talking about the municipal energy resilience program for your notes for the former CBS building, and, but we don't have anything back from you yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, if you're at home on Zoom, could you please mute your microphones? We're getting some background noise. Thank you.
The good news, Mary, is you're right under the microphone for Zoom, so the people at home on Zoom can hear you. That's when you're sitting out back where, that, that, sometimes we get negative feedback from people on Zoom if people don't walk up to the podium to speak. Any other citizens' comments or concerns? Anything on Zoom, Mike?
No hands up.
Okay, moving on, March appointments. We're going to start with, we're going to start with the Rutland County Solid Waste.
I make a motion that we appoint Bob Spalding to the Rutland County Solid Waste District as our representative.
Is that Bob?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Bob Spalding as our Rutland County Solid Waste Representative. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recuse myself.
Opposed?
No opposed.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, so we need a alternate.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate, appoint Mark Brown as the alternate to the Rutland County Solid Waste District.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we nominate Mark Brown as the alternate for the Rutland County Solid Waste District Representative. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to... So at this point, it's really not in, on the agenda per se, but we should appoint all our, the people on this list as well.
No, it's not on the, oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. But yes, there are...
Traditionally is, so, do you have that list?
I do. I can. Make a motion that we appoint Peter Mantello to a one-year term for the Emergency Management Coordinator.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for Peter Mantello to be the Emergency Management Coordinator. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, we appoint Michael Jones to the Emergency Management Director for a one-year term.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for Michael Jones to be Emergency Management Director. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Mark Brown.
Oh, you made the motion, Bob?
I did.
Okay, sorry.
Try to do all three of these in one shot.
That's exactly what I was going to ask you.
That's what I do.
Yes. I'd like to appoint Ray Lad, Kenneth Flowers, and Kevin Fenton to be the overseers of historic cemeteries for a one-year term.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for those three gentlemen to be the overseers of historic cemetery, cemeteries. All, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I do all three of these?
I don't see why not.
Make a motion to appoint to the town attorney for a one-year term Michael Tarrant, Lois Vandenberg Baldwin, and Merrill Bent.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for those three attorneys to be designated our town attorneys for one year. Any discussion?
Are these three attorneys?
Could you repeat the names, please?
Sure, it's Michael Tarrant, Lois Vandenberg Baldwin, and Merrill Bent.
Are these attorneys at the same office?
No. No, they're, all three have different areas of expertise. So it's been moved and, we did get a second, right? Mary Lee, a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have, moved and seconded those three attorneys be designated our town attorneys. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we nominate Scott Welch to be our tree warden for a one-year term.
I'll second that.
I moved and seconded Scott Welch be our tree warden. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to nominate M&amp;T Bank and TD Bank as our bank designation for a one-year term.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for M&amp;T and TD Bank to be our designated banks for the year. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move and nominate Lakes Region Free Press and the Rutland Herald to be our newspaper designations for a one-year term.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded we designate the Lakes Region Free Press and the Rutland Herald as our newspapers for the year. Any discussion?
Yes. How about Lakeside News?
No.
What bothers me is the Free Press is once, once a week. Rutland Herald's not every day anymore. Lakeside's once a week, so it's kind of hard to necessarily get what you need to get into them within the time limit that you have to.
What's your opinion on that, Mr. Town Manager?
Adding one more isn't going to really...
It isn't going to make any difference. Again, it's a one, once a week newspaper. It's too bad when Rutland Herald is no longer seven days a week, but nothing can be done about it.
I think Roy does a good job putting the minutes and everything in for the Select Board, so I'd kind of like to see it in there.
Sure.
I think a lot of people look at that paper for the Select Board minutes, so...
I'd like to change my, change my motion to add Lakeside News as one of our newspaper designations for the one-year term.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we designate the Lake Region Free Press, Rutland Herald, and Lakeside News as our newspapers for the next, for this coming year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a discussion about the Development Review Board membership, so I'll ask the chairman of the DRB to come to the podium, please. Please share with us what's on your mind.
Oh, well, I'm Laura Sargent. I'm with the DRB, and what's been happening is we don't have enough members, so we want to reduce our membership, so when we do meet, we have a quorum and can actually handle what's put in front of us. Unfortunately, with six of us, there's a lot of time where two isn't showing, somebody's sick, you know, things are happening, family events, whatever, so we don't have enough. So if we could reduce it down to five, we have a guarantee that at least three has been a show, and we can hear everybody that comes in front of us. So we've had issues where we've had two out, and that leaves us very, we're stuck, we can't do anything. The more members you have, the more you need, you have to count every seat, so if they're not there, you are not going to get a quorum, as you know, you know? So we need it reduced down to five, so we know that we have that number all the time. Everybody that comes in front of us every two weeks will be heard. And then that would, we currently have six members, and what we want to do is put the member that is the closest to being done as an alternate, so that way we always have somebody to back us up. Because at this point, we don't even have anybody, we, we have two people out, we don't have anybody extra call. There's nobody on the list.
So you have Mike Holden and Pat Keller, both their terms are going to expire this year?
Yes, and I would ask one of them to be the...
Which one?
I would hopefully let them choose.
Then that's not a decision we can make today because we'd have to change that appointment by a motion of the board. Am I correct in that?
So I suppose if we had to choose today, I would like to keep Mike on because he's, he's my vice chair, so...
Do you think that Mr. Keller would be bothered by that?
I'm sure. I haven't had a chance to discuss it with him, but the problem is, is that we've not had enough members there to be able to do anything.
Right now, we have a nine-person board?
We're supposed to, we only have six seats.
Because my understanding was Vermont statute says that the board, the DRB, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Jones, the DRB can be anywhere from five to nine members.
It can, but if you say it's nine...
I'm not done yet.
You have to count those seats.
I'm not done yet. The, this Select Board never said it was a nine-board panel. We just added members. The, the Vermont statute doesn't say that we have to designate how many seats. This is my understanding of the law, and we can check with VLCT to make sure that I'm correct.
We did.
So, we, you did? Okay.
Yes, so when we checked with them, they had said, basically, whatever number you choose, so if you say you can have up to nine members, then technically it's a nine-member board, and we have to count all the absent seats as well. Whether you have filled them or not, we have to count them. So that leaves us where L6 would have to show at all times.
What, what is, what is the percentage?
Of showing up?
No, well, no, not, I guess I'm not, I'm not following you where all six have to show up if you have nine seats.
So if you have nine seats, in order to have a quorum and be able to vote, you would have to have at least six members there.
At least five.
At least five?
Five.
Not six?
Sorry, then you would have to have all five voting yes. Our problem is, we've had nights where only three of us have been there.
So they're not making decisions, is what she's saying, they're not, at those meetings, they can't make a decision.
We can't make a decision. We can't, we can't even hear them.
So we need to get...
Six right now?
It's six right now, is what we have on the...
So you need four to have a quorum?
Yeah.
And you're not getting them?
Not at all times. Three is a guarantee.
Can we look for more people that would be willing to serve, to make it to nine?
I just, just let me, let me just finish here. That's why I don't understand why you want less members. If you're only having three show up out of six, why wouldn't we add more members to get to that five?
So if you add more members, and those members don't show up, too, we're in the same boat. The more you have, the more that has to show.
Okay, but...
So if people go on vacation, or somebody's sick, we're in trouble.
But you, do you understand where I'm going with this?
I do.
You've got six members now, and you're only having three show up, so you wanna reduce the number, how is that gonna help members show up?
The three that show are gonna...
Wouldn't make a quorum.
Wouldn't make a quorum.
You could do the quorum if you had one less member. Let me, Bob, jump in here, Bob. Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It, it does now, yeah. What you're saying is you wanna reduce the number of seats, so that...
So we can actually have a quorum and hear everybody that comes before us.
Before we take action on this, I'd like to have the, have that clarified. I'll contact VLCT.
Okay.
And find out just what their, you know, forgive my skepticism, but my understanding was when we made the decision to add more members, that we didn't, that the number of members could be fluid, could be fluid. And, yeah, it could be fluid. So if we had eight members, then you had to have the majority of eight. If you had seven members, you had to have the majority of seven. Now, if that's not correct, then...
That's not what Karen, we had, the assistant Karen, we've been to it, and that's not what she had sent me, that came back from them, so.
I'm looking for the email right now.
I have it on my phone.
Can you forward that to me?
Sure.
I think you're correct.
Because before we make this decision, based on that, I wanna find out for sure what's legal and right. Because the whole idea behind doing this before, when we did this, was to give you a more valuable tool.
And, and I understand that, but...
And if it's not working out that way, great, but...
It restricts us, you know, I mean, it would be great if that's the way it was, and everybody could always be there. Unfortunately, not everybody can, you know, and it's, I wanna make sure that we at least can hear everybody that comes in, you know, and at this point, if we don't have enough members that show up, everybody that walks through that door is, can't even hear them.
Well, I, I agree with and support your desire to do this. Um, I just wanna make sure whatever we do is, is legal and right.
Right, I understand.
So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do, I'll, I'll, I'll do the homework and get back to you.
All right, great, thank you.
And, um, I think in the same, same time, we should throw another ad out there to look for more DRB members, because there's strength in numbers, but I think an even number is awkward.
Yeah, I don't think you should ever have an even number, I think they should be a tiebreaker.
Yeah, so, and if you had seven members...
Well, originally, we did. We kept, we kept fluctuating.
Right.
So we did, but, um, one of them was who we appointed later as a zoning administrator, acting zoning administrator, until we could find somebody, so, and then he'd wanna return.
So, I, I don't think we wanna wait until June 30th, when these two terms apply, to, you know, um, expire.
Yeah, because otherwise, we can't really...
But, um, but at, at least at that point, at worst case, we can fix it then, but if one of those two members wants to agree to be an alternate, I would consider that immediately. Does that make sense, Board? Does anyone else wanna speak to this, or?
I would like to ask a question.
Certainly, Mary Lee.
Like you said, you would prefer Mike Holden. Um, Pat Keller's been on there a long time, I don't think he should just be kicked off without us talking to him.
I agree, I, I wanna hear, I wanna hear from him.
I wanna hear from both of them.
Yeah.
You know, not just automatically kick somebody off.
The first choice would be, get a seventh member that actually shows up frequently, and then you would always have four, or more, and then you would have a quorum.
Well, on seven, we would need more.
We'd need four.
We'd need four?
Yes.
That's the majority, right?
We need a simple majority.
Okay.
But that's tough.
That's tough with four.
But, but that means all four have to, in order to vote on something, all four would have to be a yes.
Agreed. Well, right now, when you have, when you have a board of five and only three show up, all three would have to be ayes or nays. Well, all three would have to be ayes, or it doesn't pass.
Right, it doesn't pass.
Same with this board, if only three, three members show up, every motion has to be unanimous, or it fails.
Right. And that's kinda the vote we're in.
Yeah, I, and I get what you're saying, and I certainly, um, commend your desire to fix this. So what we'll do is, I'll do some research, I'll talk to Mike, and, uh, we'll get back to you, and it won't be two weeks, it'll be soon, I'll get back to you within a few days.
In the meantime, can he advertise for more?
I, I would support that. Are you agreeable to do that, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, let's see if it's...
Put the word out?
Yeah.
And it's okay for you guys to, to go out and recruit, too.
Believe me, we'll try. You might have a little more success than we have, so.
Well, we're all in this together, right?
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, Laura. They're on the sheet, aren't they?
Yeah, they're on the backside.
On the backside, okay. They don't get the fancy color in, but...
They're due, they come up in June.
All right.
We also, I notice, have some openings on the Rec Commission. Could that be advertised as well?
On the Rec Commission?
Recreation Commission, there seems to be one, two, three vacant spots, according to the sheet.
I do wanna talk to the, to the board in executive session, um, sort of couple these things, so personally, so I can have that conversation.
Okay.
I'm gonna hold this email to my desk, do you have mine?
Please. And I'm gonna get ahold of, uh, would that be, uh...
You have, you have mine now, you can't make a phone call.
Oh, you can't call them anymore?
Yeah, you have to type it in, and then they'll call you back originally.
Great. I used to like calling up Garrett and getting an answer. Used to be pretty good, Garrett Baxter was the attorney.
Now you get to wait for your answer.
If he calls them back. Splendid. That was not for good work.
They're usually get back to you in twenty-four hours.
Yeah. Okay, well, I will do the research, and, uh, it's on my list of action items. Okay, let's see, moving on, recreation update, Mr. Alexander, you're up.
Bon, smile.
Hi. Welcome, Mark, welcome, Rob. So, um, did you folks get my written letter?
No.
No. Okay, well, um, I actually committed my thoughts down on paper in a written form for you folks. And I can try to summarize. And I struggled to use the, um, the Excel document to actually convey what's actually going on with recreation. I, for one, don't, uh, I don't necessarily translate those numbers and figures on paper into an actual, um, explanation about where we're at with recreation on a month-to-month basis. And I was hoping to be able to have that letter, it's addressed to the board at this point, at this time, to reflect the new members, and, um, hopefully to, and maybe reset the discussion on the CVS building a little bit with the board. I was asked during the run-up to the election by numerous people in the community, my thoughts on the, um, uh, fate of the CVS facility, um, the recreation facility. I had some conversations with the select board candidates, had a select conversation with Bob and Joe Mark about the fate of the recreation facility. And from my point of view, as I explained to them, I think that the conversation in general has been, um, poorly, um, represented by the board, um, and to the community. From my point of view, the recreation facility and the fact that we've been presented with that facility at the cost that we have, is one of the, the, the single greatest opportunity for the town of Castleton in terms of economic growth that we've seen in my generation. Probably the only thing that I've seen, um, that has been a, a parallel with that was probably during the David Walk years at the Castleton College and his introduction of athletic events and, uh, facilities at the college, which we enjoy countless benefits from in the town of Castleton. To the stadium, and the games that go on, the Shrine Game, the benefit to area, um, teams, you have your state championships done there on a regular basis. So it, it's well documented that recreation is a, is a strong source of economic activity. Right now, in the town of Castleton, we all know that Act 250 has adversely affected growth in the state of Vermont for generations. And there's not a lot of industrial growth or commercial growth that is really feasible right now, given the just overwhelming burden of, um, of regulations. So where's the next growth that's gonna come to a town like Castleton in the state of Vermont? I think it's through regulation. And I think that the, the school itself, you'll never be, you'll never get the opportunity, the town castle will never get the opportunity at the price that it has been offered to you by the school system, um, that is that right now. Um, the school itself, I'm hoping to be able to set up a tour with the select board members through the school, to be able to put to rest some of the, um, conversations that have been had in regards to the condition of the school, the physical condition of the school, the maintenance of the school, the major, major infrastructure in the school is fairly sound. It's in remarkably good condition. Compared, I had a vision in my head prior to becoming the recreation director about what the village school, the, um, actual structure consisted of, based upon my time when I went to school there, that the school was added on to after I went through the seventh and eighth grade. And I really never had any occasion to go to the school, other than just to walk through into the gym. I worked for the school system, but I was not assigned to the village school. Since taking over the recreation director position, I've become intimately, um, familiar with the school, and all, a lot of the, um, the rumors that I had heard about the deferred maintenance and issues with the school, I've really put to rest. We've had Paul McClure in recently to be able to complete some repairs that were left over from when it was the school, didn't control the school system to the girls' locker room, and, um, that pretty much buttoned up the final little bit of repair to the school that needed, that needed to be done. And it's the right size, and it is the, probably the, the single factor that is in need of attention is probably, um, parking, which is gonna need to have the fate of the school resolved before we can enter into discussions with neighbors in regards to gaining what little, um, room we have to be able to expand parking. As well, if we could, um, resolve the fate of the school, when I say resolve the fate of the school, remove it from the market, um, stop to talk about this investment, and, um, move ahead with discussions with interested parties in long-term leases, rentals, usage. If I had an interested party walk through the door tomorrow, the rector, rector, and they wanted to rent a certain portion of that building, I would have no, they most certainly would not want to proceed if they knew that the building was for sale and they couldn't actually afford to buy the whole building. So I think that it really needs to be resolved. There has been discussion on the feasibility study. Um, I, if, I believe that the pricing on that is gonna come in much higher than what, um, we're prepared to spend on feasibility study, but, uh, perhaps I'm wrong, but either way, I think that the, there's plenty of examples of communities that have been, um, confronted with the idea of public buildings becoming, specifically for school usage, becoming, unused, and communities picking them up and making use of them in a different way. There's plenty of examples out in the community, in Vermont, New England, across the nation, that we can most certainly research and find examples of, um, success stories for recreation in different towns. I don't know necessarily that a feasibility study, in my opinion, is something that we need to wait on, because, like, you know, if it had been done already, and it was already in your hand, that'd be one thing. But I think we're just continuing to kick the can down the road on the CVS building unnecessarily. So, um, the second part of my letter was specific to the Crystal Beach facility. I'm becoming more familiar with the Crystal Beach facility, and it is in need of a great deal of repairs. And one of the major infrastructure parts that really needs to be established before we can even consider doing those repairs would be water. And I know that it's come before the board previously, the question of a well being built at the facility. They have no potable water, they're still sucking water out of the lake, um, therefore, they cannot offer any concessions at the lake for normal operations and for any, you know, concessions that you might have associated with a rental of a facility, or, uh, you know, if we ever got to the point where we were doing receptions at the Crystal Beach facility, or the July Fourth celebration, or fishing, burpees, or anything like that. We need water at the, we need water at the Crystal Beach. You know, I guess, uh, I would go out on a limb and say it's one of the most valuable pieces of property in Rutland County, and, um, we don't have potable water there, and the facility doesn't need a lot of work. So if the board would be willing to consider spending fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars or other funds to be able to add a well built, that would be great. That would benefit the entirety of the town of Castleton. Beyond that, in terms of the numbers of, uh, we have, um, not numbers, but activities, we have adventure camp, swim camp, sailing camp, all coming online, softball for girls, Little League baseball for boys and girls, um, for the summer, so we have our summer camps coming online on Hago, so there'll be a lot of activity there. There, we had a successful basketball season where the teams ended up adding, I think it was four to five games in the season for both teams, girls and the boys. So I would describe that as a success, um, increasing play activity for, um, the kids. We should have yoga online and as a payable, um, event soon, and, another thing, oh, we will begin charging monies for pickup basketball, um, beginning, beginning in April, although I'm not sure what the usage of the, the gymnasium is during the summer months because of the heat. Haven't been there to seen it, see it, I don't know if they'll continue to play during the summer. But if they do, it'll be a payable event. Any questions?
One. Little League is sent off to Rutland now. Would we be capable to do it right there?
I, I don't know, unless, would we be capable to what?
To have Little League right here, like it used to be, at Dewey Field?
Uh, we will have games here at Little League, at Dewey Field. We will be going through, um, we are going to four cement pads for each dugout. One of them's blown over again right now at Dewey Field. We'll be going through all the dugouts, and both Dewey Field and Highville, myself and some volunteers will be rebuilding the dugouts. We're going to bring the facility back at Dewey Field, so there's monies that have been allocated to the roof. We will be going through the physical structure, reestablishing water, electricity, um, and I will be going through the fields myself and with the assistance of volunteers. Um, that's my strength, that is the physical fields, um, making them safer play, getting them up to snuff, so. We will have games there, and I think that, you know, this'll be my first season going through, um, with the softball and baseball. So we have a perfect, um, example with softball being more local, um, and the administration... So we have a perfect example with softball being more local and the administration of it compared to Rutland County Little League. Rutland County Little League, they do everything for the teams. It's just a fee-based. You just need to show up with your kids. They provide all the baseballs, pay for the umpires, provide the uniforms, bats, Petri equipment, everything. And as opposed to softball, which there is more local organization involved. So we'll see which one is easier to administer.
What would it cost me if I was younger to send my son to Little League in Rutland?
Right now, I think I'd have to throw out the number of, I think it's like forty-five or fifty-five dollars.
Total?
Total. So it's not, it's not that it's expensive. It's just that it's done on a larger scale. There's a lot more teams and there's a lot more participation in it. And I guess that's one of the struggles of the softball team, softball league has experienced is just the lack of organized teams in given towns. So you don't have as many teams to play against. You end up playing the same team repeatedly and just the administration of it has been less, less organized, we'll say. But that's just from me picking up what other people are weighing down right now. I'm going to have to experience it for this first season.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
There might be some people that want to know the budget for that. Can you mind, I'll just speak real quick about it.
Keep it brief, please.
I can keep it brief. So the voters appropriated ninety thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars for the operating costs of the former Castleton Village School. As of the, as of the end of January, there was thirty-seven thousand dollars remaining in that budget. So that what has to be paid for the remaining six months of the year, five months of the year, is the utilities, which is averaging around thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars a month for electricity. We're coming to the end of the heating season, so we won't have to worry about that of large fuel consumption. But what we, why we've spent so much money is of the maintenance that was required in the building. So that's why ninety thousand or thirty-seven thousand dollars remain. And it wasn't because of fuel and, and the normal operating costs. It was a habitable maintenance. So, and we, we put phone, internet in there now, so there's a cost associated with that. So what, why I'm saying this somewhat out of this is by the end of the fiscal year, five months from now, I don't anticipate a lot of money left over of that thirty-seven thousand dollars of that ninety that the voters had appropriated. Next year's budget's down to seventy-four thousand because a lot of that one-time work was done this year, so didn't carry over into next year. So the budget's like seventy-four thousand or something next year. So I have received questions like, what, what are the expenses and how much have we spent? So I hope I can, I answered the thirty thousand foot flyover on that, that we, we've spent, we're kind of on target if you look at it month by month, but that we got thirty-seven thousand dollars remaining. I don't see a big windfall of cash left over at the end of fiscal year. Just wanted to provide that update.
Sue?
Where did this proposal come from? Oh, yes, it's on the internet.
Feasibility study.
The company's name, there's, there's many.
How much did we pay for this?
Sue, Sue, I need to interrupt. That's the next item on the agenda. We will address that. So at this point, that's premature. Anything else to?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, let's talk about the feasibility study then.
This next thing on the agenda, we did receive, we sent out a, sent out a request for proposals for feasibility studies for the village school. We got one response from Black River Design Architects. And correct me or jump in, we have one response and we have spent no money on it.
And there's, we have a John, I hope I butchered name, John, but John Hemmelgarn from Black River Design is on Zoom here to answer, be able to answer questions if we have them.
So just for, so everyone is aware, we have the one proposal and the total cost, if we were to engage this company with this proposal for, for a feasibility study would be ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. That's a bit more than we were hoping to see. And at this point, we are not, while we're here to discuss it. So I'm going to open it up to the board first, if everyone has had a chance to look at this. And if anyone has any thoughts from the board first that they would like to share, I would like to hear them. Go ahead.
Now, I think when we, it was originally talked about a feasibility study. It was to consider the condition of the building, what we could anticipate for yearly maintenance costs and perhaps to go as far as to compare it to what other communities have done to have a successful recreation center. This feasibility plan is much more detailed than that.
It is.
I mean, I love this. In a perfect world, this is it, you know, plug in that ninety-nine thousand and out the other side comes, the building's all set, programs are in place. I mean, they're talking about having meetings with the community to determine what the needs are. So there's some overlap with what our recreation director's doing and the rec committee and forensic rec. I mean, this is a really, really nice proposal, but it is, it's not the Cadillac plan, it's the Rolls Royce plan.
I was thinking Lamborghini, but yeah.
Did you say a representative is on?
Yes.
So is, is this scalable? Can we do part of this feasibility study or is it in for a penny, in for a pound?
All right, I unmuted and I, my name is John Hemmelgarn and you did a great job with my name, thank you. And I hear I was the one that was giving you feedback earlier. So if something happens, you know, raise your hand or tell me to shut up and I'll mute myself. But no, this is not, this was our understanding of the, of the request that you had. There's a significant component in there for some market analysis and public engagement with an extremely experienced firm, not from Vermont, but that really specializes in community and recreation centers. That was, was going to take care of those kinds of, of the programming and the, and the operational analysis, the market, market analysis. And there were, that was a fair amount in there. In addition, then there was an architectural programming component where we would sit down and try to interview staff here and come up the list of the spaces and how much space needed. We were going to take a look at the, the school building itself and, you know, identify need there. And it sounds like you may have done a fair amount of that and you've already done some of the maintenance. So I think that to answer your question, I think there's a lot of things that could be scalable here to really right-size what you have, what you're looking for. Or to, you know, conversely, you look at the budget that you have and you could then decide, you know, which, which services are the ones that are, that you would like to prioritize to, to, to fit within your budget. So this, again, briefly, this was, this was our understanding of what you were looking at and never been to compare to a Lamborghini before, but.
Well, this is beautiful work.
Is usually where you, where you end up. It was also an extreme challenge to, to limit this to fifteen pages like you requested. So we really tried to condense that down. Barry Dunn is the other consultant and they've got, they, we could, we could do a hundred pages of their projects if you wanted, but that, I understand why you'd want to limit that.
Mr. Dunlop, go ahead.
To answer John's question, the town has already done, has already had two assessments and an appraisal done of the building. So we, we generally know where we stand with major components like roof, heating system, those type of things. So I don't even, that, that we've paid money for in the past. So if it's scalable, Mr. Chairman, I think that if the board would look at that, in the back of this, it has, you know, a little page on the tasks.
Nine.
Page nine.
Yep.
Yeah, so the pricing is based upon the task and if you, if it's scalable and you could say, we don't need task one because we have appraisals and such, but number two is what we need or, and number three, I guess you could put it, you know, talk to John and his folks and maybe make it scalable so that it, it's only what we need.
What we can afford.
Yeah, and, and well, there's always the affordability part of it, so.
Right. I mean, that's the delicate balance because some of the community is really in favor of this facility, like I am, and some of the community is absolutely opposed to it. So how do we, we need to be able to afford the essential information so people can look at it and make a good decision. And the community can feel good about it, whichever way it goes. You know, it'd be nice to see more consensus in the community than there is right now.
And that, that public engagement part, which was, what a task it was and the three we needed.
Yeah. I'm hoping this feasibility study, that we can afford to do it, that we will do it and it will convince the voters in town that this is a viable facility that will enhance life in Castleton.
Or know that it's not feasible at all.
Or, or it may not be feasible. That's, I don't know. I'm hoping it is, but I don't have the expertise to say one way or the other. And I think a lot of people are coming out making judgments one way or the other and we don't have the expertise. And we should, this is going to be a wonderful project if we can afford it and do it the right way.
Anything else from the board before I speak?
Is this something that John and Mike can scale down to a point for us and bring back to us?
I have a suggestion, but my suggestion is, Mr. Brown, would you be willing to sit with Mr. Alexander and Mr. Smith and form a subcommittee and see if you can pick this apart and see what parts we truly need and see what the associated costs are?
Yep.
And if we can figure out some way to pay for it? And is that something that you could have done in two weeks or four weeks or what do you think?
John, what is your availability, availability like? I'm out of town next week.
I meant more John Alexander than, well, both Johns, I guess, but I was.
There's too many of us named John.
I did say Mr. Alexander on purpose.
We need both Johns, yes.
So is that something that you could coordinate?
Yes.
Can you get back to myself and the town manager when you think you could be ready with a report?
Yes. I'm out of town next week, so I'm thinking we would be two or three weeks. Does that seem reasonable? John on Zoom?
Yes, that's, that's easy for me. The hard work's here, yours.
So can we put this on the agenda for the meeting of whatever the next meeting is? No, that'd be two weeks. That's a little bit optimistic, right?
I don't think we can do that.
That's optimistic. So I'm bringing up my calendar.
It's the sixth.
April eighth?
Eight.
You think that's reasonable, Mark?
Yes, we'll do it then.
Okay.
I will not be here, but that's okay. I'm going to be cruising.
And, and before you close this, Nick, I got, I just got, I got to get a clarification on this.
Certainly. So we're agreed that Mr. Brown's going to chair a subcommittee and get back to us on April eighth?
And just so Allison can get this to you, Mr. Chairman, is the, the purpose of this meeting is to determine what components of this that we, the town of Castleton would need, is that?
Yeah, basically what I'm asking is to prioritize and pick out, you know, some of this is redundant efforts we've already made. John Alexander would have a good feel for that and you would have a good feel for what's already been done, you know, and, and what, what are these things that do we, can we, do we not need and what things do we absolutely have to do? And then from there, we can see if we can project a cost. By then, we'll also know more about that grant that we applied for that we should know by the end of March, we think. So maybe we can meld those two and come up with a plan that makes sense.
That might even solve the whole problem.
I'd love to be optimistic, but sometimes I, I can be delusional sometimes, too.
The planning grant, they usually aren't big numbers, aren't big dollar figures.
So I'll go back to page nine, Bob, and then, so Mark, we all set for now.
Mr. John Hemmelgarn, a phone number where I can contact you?
Eight oh two, seven nine three, seven two zero five is my cell number. And that's the best way to reach me these days. Post-pandemic, it's about the only way.
Okay, I'll reach out to you tomorrow or Wednesday and see what we can set up.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, John. I'm going to let Bob go first, then I'll talk to you guys. I, just so I'm clear on this, the way I read this chart, it looks like Black River Design gave us a price, a total price that they do all nine tasks of twenty-nine thousand five oh one. Am I mistaken when I read this chart this way? It is, the ninety-nine thousand is all the companies and all what they produce. Is that, am I reading it right?
Correct.
So the feasibility study, if we did all nine tasks, is estimated to be only twenty-nine thousand five oh one, not ninety-nine thousand. Because we wouldn't have all these companies doing.
I think that's each part that they do for each task.
I think that. But do you see what I'm saying, Rob?
I see what you're saying, but I think like.
In other words, if we had Barry, Barry Dunn, they're only going to do, they're not going to do task six or seven. They didn't give us a price on it, but their total price at the bottom is fifty-seven.
Can I interject?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think that what, what we see here is a total summarization of the whole project that would be coordinated by Black River Design and the Berry Hill, Novelli, et cetera, other subcontractors. Am I right in that, John? Am I reading that correctly?
He dropped off.
Oh, well, that, that's the way I read it. Does that sound right to you?
Absolutely right, that Black River Design would be subcontracting Novelli Engineering and engineer, engineering services of Vermont incrementally as they go along.
Okay, so like task, task one, Bob, Black River Designs' part of task one is going to cost twelve thousand, Barry Dunn's part of task one is going to cost ninety-seven hundred, Novelli's is going to be fifteen hundred, so all that added up. So task one total would cost us twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, so these aren't separate companies. In other words, they're.
They're separate companies, but they're all working together.
Yeah, see, I didn't, I didn't understand they're all working together. If I read this whole report, or what I read of this report, if I read it correctly, is that Black River Design is the contractor and these are their subs. Okay, okay. And what the costs associated with those subcontractors are. Okay. So the total cost will be ninety-nine thousand eight. Okay, all right. Which we're not budgeted for, so we got to come up with plan B, which was what Mr. Brown's going to do. Okay. Has come up with plan, or at least start to flesh out something of a plan B.
Can I say something, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, Rob.
Um, do we have, I know that John was talking earlier about how the roof is in better shape than originally thought. Do we have like a projected, say, ten-year maintenance schedule of cost on that?
Not a.
Like just, you're just like, what, what's it going to need in the next ten years cost-wise roughly, barring unforeseen circumstances, but?
We do, we had a separate one done because it was all, it was really kind of a little contentious. So we had Premier Roofing come in and do an assessment after everybody else. So we've got some different opinions.
I'm just talking about the whole, like the whole building in general, like to maintain that whole building for the next ten years, let's say, do we have a rough idea what that cost is going to be?
Not cost. It was mostly, these are the things that we found wrong and you would need a replacement in the next three to five years. And I don't remember if there's, so I shouldn't tell you to rephrase that. I don't remember if this cost whether or not, but I can share with everybody again all the different studies.
Because I mean, I think it might help some people in the town if they know like we're not going to have to be five years in and all of a sudden we got to drop a million dollars on a project, you know what I mean?
I'll share with you and I think you, once you read it, you can, you'll be able to see if that, if that, what you're asking for is there.
Okay. I, yeah, we went through that originally when we first took possession of the building and we had somebody come in and look at everything and there was a pretty good sized list, but it wasn't horrible. It's nowhere near a million bucks. Okay. And then, and then as we got deeper into it and then when John got into it, Mr. Alexander, a lot of the building is in not that bad a shape. And when we had Premier Roofing come and look at the roof, he said that, yeah, it's, it should be on the list, but it's not imminent. It doesn't have to be done this year.
Okay, so what we would, you know, have to do is figure out like a roof replacement schedule so that we can tuck that money away.
Yeah.
But I think if we could come up with some kind of operating, like a, just a picture of some sort of operating costs for the ten years, five years, take, you know, take your. pick or whatever, the town might think of it a little different.
Well, there's some of these pieces of this puzzle have already been accumulated.
Okay.
So part of what Mark's gonna be doing is finding out what pieces of those puzzles we have, and knowing you're not putting it together, but at least finding out what we have and what we don't have.
I think that would be the first step of a feasibility study, be able to present to the taxpayers, hey, we can keep this building, it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars a year, or whatever that number is, and that will be enough to turn the lights on, heat the building, and put away enough money in reserve each year to replace, you know, the roof in ten years, or whatever it is down there, yeah. An annual budget that looks realistic.
But step one is we gotta figure out what the questions are, and that's what, first thing is to do is figure out what the questions are, what pieces of that puzzle we currently have.
Okay.
And what do we need to go out and get? Does that sound right, Mark?
I believe so. That's what I'm hoping to get.
Perfect.
Anything else, Rob?
I'm good.
Anything else from the board? Hey, do we have hands? We have hands. Uh, we'll let Sue go first. You still gotta tell us who you are, Sue. Mainly for Allison's benefit.
Susan Day, Folk Rite, wrote, um, as a, as a longstanding, um, board member for YMCA camp, this is a Boston facility, okay? This is not something that we can afford. The fact that we have a good building, and John says and recommends that we keep this building and we work on it a little by little, this is what we can afford. You're duplicating services. Here's a pool. You got a pool over at the college if you wanna swim. Five bucks a time. You wanna go and work in a really good, um, gym, you pay a hundred and ninety dollars a year, whatever it is now. You can go and use that gym anytime you want. This is mostly for the kids, for the kids that forty-five or fifty-five dollars is a lot of money to be able to pay to be on a little league.
Especially if you have five kids.
Or two or three even. You know, everybody's been nickel and dining this poor little building here, and then you come up with something like this.
Sue, wait a minute. This is not a renovation plan. This was a proposal for a feasibility study.
I understand.
There's a pool in the cover sheet, but that doesn't mean they planned on putting a pool in this building.
I understand, but they threw everything in, just like the, the folks that, that want the long-term care facility up there, threw everything, and they wanted to use that same, that same, uh, blueprint and put four stories up. Not what we want.
Well, we're not here to discuss the Sand Hill facility right now.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just throwing that in. I, I want to see, first of all, this board back the recreation department and at least say, okay, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna take this off the market so you can start applying for grants, so you can make this facility pay for itself.
Okay, Sue, I'm gonna stop you right there. That's exactly what Brett and Mark is gonna do.
Okay.
Right, Mark? And start to figure out what the questions are.
That's what we wanna do.
Okay, Mary, do you have anything to add?
To make this project look positive to the whole community.
Yeah. So my, my, my only question is, um, is really sort of technical, do, and, and he's not on anymore, right?
He is not.
Okay. Do the task price tags change, or were they influenced by this Rolls Royce version of, of a rec center? That's just my question, because I, I think we're all probably in agreement that we don't need a pool in that rec, in our rec center. But, so, so the question is, does this go down? Were these numbers influenced at all by this?
I, I, can I speak?
Certainly.
Mary, I don't believe so. I think that this was just an example of something they've done at another facility in the past, maybe when they built a new one or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think it has anything to do with the actual feasibility study.
I don't think it matches our footprint.
No, that's why I don't think it has anything to do with it. Same with the rest of the designs that are in the back. These are just other things that they've done.
Okay.
I think basically they're just trying to show that they've done stuff like this in the past.
Actually, if you rediscover the cover, it nowhere in it does it mention a pool in the Castleton Village School.
It doesn't really mention much about the Village School, other than we're gonna look at it.
It's gonna go outside the footprint, and, and, and so that, this whole, this whole thing was made it confusing, actually, to the public at the seat. So, okay, that's good. Thank you.
Anything else from the public? Anything on Zoom, Mike?
Anybody on Zoom have a question for the board?
So, Mark, you're clear? You're clear?
I'm clear.
Okay.
I wanna have a response to what Rob had said. You, you had, we just had a, a company come around that, that, if you heard the term brightly in the past meetings, that this is an asset management, um, platform. So part of that process was to assess all of our infrastructure, and they, they were just here this last week and this week, today, and they assessed all of our assets, including the Village School. They walked around with John. And so their report back to, to this board is to provide that insight of this build, this, this, uh, boiler, is this old and it's gonna, this is the longevity, and ten years you're gonna need to replace it, and it's gonna cost us much money. That's, that's what they're gonna provide back to this board.
Yeah, I think Mark had it right. When we just need to be able to go to the public and say, it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars a year, whatever, for, for the duration. I think that, yeah, I think that'll answer the public's questions for the most part.
They said they're three to four weeks away from providing that information to us, but that was why the town, the select board approved this, uh, brightly program is, it's gonna create a capital asset program for us, for our vehicles, our buildings, our roads, and, but it's gonna take three to four weeks to get that assessment. But they went through that building, and they looked at all of the things that would be high-value, replaceable things, like floors, uh, heating systems, all that stuff.
So then some of the questions that might get asked during the feasibility study should be able to be answered by that.
Right, so should we, we, until we get the brightly surveys, or we're not paying for the same information from two different firms?
Um, I'm not sure if the, I'll try to answer your question without being very verbose, but, um, I don't think it's gonna, the, what, brightly's not gonna answer all the questions that you had about community engagement and stuff. It's gonna answer facility conditions and replacement costs.
Correct, but that would be one task that we could take off of the feasibility study.
That's what, yeah, that's one of the main issues here, is to find out what's redundant. And not do the thing, you know, if we've already done it, we're not gonna pay for it to get done again.
We've already paid for it, so it's, it's come, it'll become forthcoming, three to four weeks.
Okay, does that could save us a little money here if it's already been done?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, do you recall the amount of the grant that we're hoping to get?
It's up to, I think it was, I think it was only twenty-six thousand dollars.
That's what I was thinking, just under thirty.
Yeah, so.
When I talk to him, I think we should, well, that's kind of what we're looking to spend, right?
I'm not opposed to that, and then you can hopefully pare this down to.
What can we get?
Or.
Twenty-six thousand and the information that we got from brightly.
And create, to figure out what the priorities are.
Right.
We have a match to, so, whatever, twenty percent of.
To be fair to this, John, and I'm not gonna attempt his last name, I think we really need to have the brightly report before you go and ask him what, you know, what else we need.
It could save us five grand.
Yeah.
Well, what, what we're asking Mark to do is start to put all this together.
Yeah.
And, and if we have to wait until sometime late April or early May to make, start making some of the hard decisions, then that's what we do.
When I talk to John, I'll tell him that we have this brightly assessment coming in a month.
He may be familiar with these folks, too.
I'm sure he is.
He'll be able to say, oh, they'll do this, but they don't do this, and, like one of the old Vermonters I used to work with, used to say, you can't know how long the ball of string is till you unroll it. Yeah.
You know, and maybe we can use, you know, some of the rec commission or the friends of rec to do some of the outreach, too, to save a little bit of money from having to have a third-party company doing outreach.
This has done a great job of telling us what the questions are.
Yeah.
Now all we gotta do is figure out what we already have answers for and what we really need answers to that we don't have yet.
Yeah, that's a great proposal. They just cover a lot of things that, well, we can't afford, we like, but we can afford to save. How do we get it down to make it work so we can make this a reality?
And that's exactly what we're asking you to do. So can we move on now? Everybody set? Sorry this meeting's taken so long, but we've got a lot of ground to cover. Um, see, we're moving on to tobacco and, tobacco and liquor licenses. Who wants to take a stab at this?
I think Rob should.
Okay, do we have to do each one separate, or can we do them both together?
You can do it all in one. You can read right off the agenda, Rob.
I would make a motion to approve Toltec Incorporated DBA Beverage King Market and Deli Tobacco License Approval, um, and PFB Incorporated DBA Premier's Market Second Class Liquor License and Tobacco License.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, and any discussion on this?
So from the packet, I'm determining that the chief of police has signed up on both of these.
That is correct. It's our typical procedure. They don't get to us until they've gotten through him. So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No, I just wanna make clear, we, we did Toltec and we did the PFB Incorporated.
Yes.
Just those two.
Yep.
Okay.
In our new procedure, there's nothing to sign, so I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we can move on. Uh, Mr. Jones, this one's yours. A request to transfer money to the library account?
So, yes, thank you. Uh, so this is a second request made by the library to draw on the hundred thousand dollar grant they received. Um, so they've transferred fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars into the town's account. Um, when the board approves it, then we in turn do an ACH to them, to their account, uh, as part of their grant. And we have ten days by federal law to make the transfer. Um, we're, tonight, we're within the ten days, this week would be in the ten days. So if you prove it, then tomorrow, starting tomorrow, Joe will start making the appropriate moves to get the money done.
This is something you need a select board approval to do?
Correct, because it's not something I can tell the treasurer to do.
Okay, I need a motion.
Make a motion that we allow the town manager to transfer, or the town offices to transfer fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars to the library account for grant funds reimbursement.
I'll second.
Did I do that right?
I'm going to add into that as a comment for, we have a motion and a second, and my comment is, this is for the, on behalf of the housing and community grant for the Castleton Free Library. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, lease agreement for the salt shed. Mr. Jones, you have the floor?
Uh, this is a two-year agreement, starts on, uh, June, in June, for leasing the salt shed on Route 4A, number sixteen fifty-six Route 4A, in the town of Castleton, owned by Ruby Construction. We've, as long as I've been here, we've been renting this. Um, the plan here would be if we do this two-year, um, continuation of a lease, that, that gives us the two years to complete our own salt and sand shed. So this would carry us through that point, or we wouldn't need to do the lease after this two years. Um, so it's, um, and, um, the owner was gonna raise the price by five hundred dollars per year. They agreed not to do that for this two-year lease, so it's still four thousand dollars per year, uh, to Ruby Construction.
Any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the lease agreement between Ruby Construction Incorporated and the town of Castleton to lease salt shed at his property at sixteen fifty-six Route 4A East in the town of Castleton for the sum of four thousand dollars per year.
I'll second. Did it say in your motion, two years?
I didn't. I was gonna add that, too. Mark was quick on me here. I stopped talking, right? It's for, it's for a two-year lease.
Two-year lease.
Yeah, two-year, two-year lease agreement with four thousand dollars for each year.
Any discussion from the board?
Commencing when?
Who seconded? Who seconded?
Mark Brown.
Okay.
It commences one June, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna add the comment that there's gonna be discussion on building a new salt shed during the town manager's report. Um, so I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, it wasn't in your motion, but do we need a separate motion to authorize the town manager to sign this, or do you think it's just okay the way it is?
I would think that we proved it, that's authorization.
Okay.
It has the spot there on the back.
Yeah.
I, I should have mentioned it, probably.
That's okay. We'll get, we're gonna figure this out.
You can grab me at any time.
Okay, where are we at? Okay, uh, snow and ice control plan approval. Are you ready to proceed with this?
Yes.
So the, the copy we have did incorporate the changes you wanted?
I did, they did, yes.
Okay.
So I guess the purpose of this, this is something that Jeff's on to, uh, highway fund, uh, but to try to provide some clarity to the public on, uh, what we do, um, when it comes to removal of snow and ice from our, our town highways and our sidewalks. And, Jeff had put together his priorities for routes, and, um, one of the things I, I pirated this, um, full disclosure, um, we use the format that V-Trans had for snow and ice control plan, and we modified it for us at the town of Castleton. Um, and it does talk about several things in here, um, but it, it does provide clarity on priorities of what roads get, um, are cleared first. And again, we made this, so those are always subject to change based upon needs, input from the community, uh, but we had to have a starting point, uh, to be able to provide this to the public. Um, it, it talks about materials, uh, whether it's road salt, uh, if we ever went to liquids, um, winter sand, the, and, you know, I'm, I'm kind of, I wanna paraphrase it, but it's gonna be hard to paraphrase this large document, but, um, you know, application procedures, equipment, one of the things that I wanted to get out of this is to be able to definitively say in a, in a policy that we, we would commit to using less salt in areas that are near feeder streams and stuff that feed into our brooks and into the lake. Um, and that's kind of common practice happening around the country. Um, we have to mark the signs that, so people would know. This policy would say it as, as well, but, um, the, the chlorides, magnesium or calcium chlorides, um, do have an impact on the environment and have an impact on invertebrates especially. Um, so if we could, we'll, we'll have to flush out those areas, uh, where to use less materials on, uh, that are near those watershed areas, but this would actually make it official, instead of just talking about it. But then we could post it, so people, when they wanna come up, up the lake and they still wanna do a hundred miles an hour past the lake house, uh, and there's signs posted that it's a low-salt area, um, when they go skiddy into the, the ledges, um.
Take down my mailbox?
That's in there. Taking down your mailbox is in there. Um, so, and then also in here are Jeff's priorities and a map. So Appendix B is the road priority map, um, and it talks about Priority One Roads, Priority Two Roads, Priority Three Roads, and then sidewalks. And then there's, at the very end of it, there's a map that's color-coded showing where those colored routes are. Um, so somebody can look at it and go, where am I in the pecking order? Um, and understand that when, when the guys are, when the road crews are plowing, um, why you, somebody's gonna be last. This is inevitable, right? Um, somebody's gonna be last. And, uh, so this gives, this gives some opportunity to, to flush it out why we do this. Um, and it's, it's always open for discussion with somebody if they have a particular question, like, I have a bus on my road and you guys are coming last, and, you know, the bus doesn't get clear, the road's not clear for the bus. Those are things that we'll deal with, but I know that, um, Jeff has the bus routes, um, and times that the school gives us, so I think. So I think it's all factored in here. So this is our first attempt at providing some clarity to the public and provide us our own kind of internal standard operating procedures.
So before I open this up for discussion, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the snow and ice control plan provided by the town manager for the town of Castleton, highways and sidewalks dated 01 March 2024.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board?
I read all this through. I think it's really well done.
As do I. The only question I had was Appendix B is the priority of the roads. How flexible is that? If we have a case where something is rated a low priority and it should be moved up the list as far as priority, or?
It's up to us. I think that a conversation would be had with, between me as the road commissioner and Jeff as the highway foreman. Listen to what anybody has to say and why.
Because I don't have anything specific in mind right now, but there may come to, it may come to pass that there's something we don't know that would make life a lot better for somebody else if we rearrange priorities a little.
Yeah. It's, the good thing about it is this is our policy, not somebody else's. So we have the ability to flex it around as we need to.
So if we change this, do we need to come bring it back to the board? You know, when we change Appendix B, do we actually have to do board action? Or is that something that we can and should delegate to the town, the road commissioner and the road foreman?
I think that's, I don't think, oh, single change like, that we post this. This is going to get posted on the website so that anybody can see it. And as we make posts, when we make it, when we make a change to it, it'll come out. You'll see the changes on the website as well. We normally, when we post now, we seem to make it on Front Porch Forum, the town website. And if I'm feeling generous, I go to Facebook. So.
I think Front Porch Forum is a very good tool.
Absolutely.
A lot of people.
So do we have any more discussion on the snow and ice control?
Are these all routes that we're doing now? I just have a question on Hydeville Plaza. Are we plowing Hydeville Plaza? It's on Route number 11 with the 1-ton truck.
And that's Jeff's got where they plow out the, we're not plowing Taggart Lane right now, not Taggart Lane, Gilbert Lane?
Yeah.
That was what something made. Jeff, all of you weighing on that one, because I'm not sure exactly what's going on with that one. But before the board, a while ago, was the town taking over Gilbert Lane, if they brought it up?
Yeah, I saw your manager's report. I was just curious what we were plowing in the plaza, that's all.
As far as I know, that we're not plowing anything in the plaza, that's all.
I just said it there, that's all.
Jeff, you want anything about that one?
Yeah, that's just the apron that was put in last year from well. Just that small little area. It can be pulled. It's not really much. I think it's 20 feet by 60 feet.
Technically, don't have to do it. It's state highway there, so we're not obligated to do that apron.
Do we plow Gilbert Lane? We don't plow that.
That's private road until such point as that the owners of the property would like to bring that up to at least minimum Class 3 road standards.
Okay.
Have a place for us to push snow and turn around. Then it's kind of, it's there simmering, but I did talk to the owner of the plaza this past week, and they're still interested. It's Nancy Libertori. She's still interested in working with the landowner here, which is Joe Howard, and the pizza shop to get that work done, if they can come together and settle that out, so. To get, when I say that, just to bring it up to Class 3 standards, because Mr. Howard's putting in homes out behind there in that development.
Obviously, I was going to say, if we're plowing Gilbert Lane, but we're not plowing the road that goes to Gilbert Lane, that's a little senseless.
No, Gilbert Lane's a private.
Okay, okay.
Any more discussion from the board? On this?
I'm good.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor of approving the ice and, snow and ice control plan? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you.
So, moving on. Highway Safety Improvement Grant. Here on again, Mr. Town Manager.
All right, this is a highway safety improvement grant through V-Trans. I applied for this thing so long ago, but they finally approved it. And this was to improve highway safety on South Street, North Road. Off the top of my head, I don't remember them. Those are the two big ones. For things like signs, delineators, corners, to make sure. There's a lot of old signposts, the old type signposts that need to be replaced, and some signs that are faded, no longer reflective, and this grant is no match. And I was pleasantly shocked that we got it. So what does that mean? So what out of this one is, our guys have to do the work. And we already struggle with getting our projects done usually in the summer, in some form or fashion. So I just hired two, we just hired a full-time person on the highway department to fill that last open spot. And we hired our two part-time people, and I talked to Jeff about this. And the things that we normally struggle with, like roadside mowing, and we whack in guardrails and washing bridges and all the other things, this is just another task to help get on there on the docket and have some extra help to get it done. But if you drive around town, you see signs that are tipped over, where maybe snow hit it or a car hit it. We've got to get back to that pride of our own, just to make sure our stuff that's, we do have out there is not tipped over or fallen down. So having some extra personnel to do that is imperative. There was a question about buying a post pounder, because ours is inadequate for these bigger posts. And I just got a text from Jeff earlier that it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,000-plus. I don't think we can use a grant for it, and it would have to come out of the highway budget. He said that they're going to do it the old-fashioned way. So, and if V-Trans is feeling generous, they let us borrow theirs. So it might not be doom and gloom, and everyone's on a sledgehammer and stuff like that. But it gets, this grant is going to help us get some of that older signage taken down. Make the roads better, Mark, and safer.
Is there anything that can be done by students that have to do community service? Or is this all too much equipment and whatever?
It's always, it's always a feel-good thing, Mary Lee, to get, you know, have people involved with us and help us. But in the long run, it always ends up trying to get their schedules matched up with ours and with the right people. And then VLCT says, well, they really can't do that for liability purposes. And so it usually isn't, it doesn't work out in our favor. If we could, I certainly would think it's a great idea, but because the summertime, the students are not home, and they're not in the, on the campus, so if we're talking university. So that's why we've got a couple extra people on the job now. Hopefully, they work out. They've started work already. All three of them actually are on. All three of them are, they're there, right?
I've met one of them, just because of my schedule.
There's three of them.
New full-time today, I met and did some stuff with it today.
Yep, three of them started.
Thank you.
Is that, is that the correct dollar amount, Mike, on this?
37.4.
I got 34.7.
34.7, we have it. That's correct.
Okay.
And there's no, and there is no?
No match, you said. Okay, okay.
So I don't believe we have a motion yet, do we?
Go for it, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not supposed to do that.
Oh, you're not?
You, no. We do need a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the agreement and accept the grant.
So moved. Because we can't do that?
We can do that.
Yeah?
We can do that.
I think so, because we do it all the time.
So we have a motion to approve this grant and, accept the grant and authorize the town manager to sign the agreement. Is there a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have to sign this.
Perfect.
Mike signs it.
Mike's got to sign it.
Okay, we're done with the blue folder. Okay. Discussion about municipal water. I have nothing in my packet on that.
It's, this is a drive-by.
Okay, drive-by, sir.
Well, there's some stuff in my report that talked about the most recent developments on the lack of municipal, I'll say municipal, public drinking water. And that was the DRB's last hearing on the Prospect Point property. And that, there's concerns with the neighbors that their wells are already some low recovery rates in their wells. And if they put more, more wells for five properties up there, that it could really be devastating to their wells. So there was a discussion had about that. And we also have some business owners that were there for the lodge. For those that don't know it, they're having issues with their well. And they have to treat stuff or bring water in. And they've been asking for years, Dan Brown, actually, I guess, went to the state and asked about forming his own fire district for that. His fellowship Bible church here on Route 30, basically just past that was where public water access ends to bring that water further up the lake along the east shore. He was told, no, that the state will not allow that. They don't want expansions of fire districts, and they don't want formations of new fire districts. What they really want is us to consolidate the fire districts. And that's, in this town of Castleton, that's probably not going to happen. There's just some reasons there that, and one of them is the purchasing. Fire District 3 is up Route 30. That's where stops is Fire District 3. And they purchased their water through Fire District 1. And if Fire District 1 doesn't sell them any more water, they can't really expand. So we got businesses along the east side of the lake. We got development. We've got now, seasonal camps are now short-term rentals. And I suspect, and I can't prove this, because Prospect Point also is on a boil water notice for the clubhouse. And I suspect that if there's wells that are contaminated with arsenic and heavy metals along, or for a couple of those places, that there may be wells up along that way that other wells that aren't subject to Vermont Department of Health rules and testing, that could be also contaminated. And so I'm not, this is, there's, by no means am I saying, oh my God, there's poisonous wells along Route 30. I'm not saying that. I just know what I know. And there's some places that are struggling right now. So this discussion's been on the table for quite a long time, since I've been here. This has been brought up more than once. But I think we're seeing some issues with development, or future development or growth. And to figure out, is this something the town, the select board wants to get more information on, want to hear from residents on their concerns? And then, you know, eventually, it might morph into a discussion about, shall the town take over drinking water and make it a municipal service, like their wastewater is, versus it being run by a fire district? Because what we're seeing by the fire districts is, they just have all these reasons why they can't. They don't, they're not applying, or not saying applying. They've applied for some grants, but they're not getting the grants. If the town owned it, we could apply for grants. Doesn't mean we're going to get them. But just for a future discussion, I wanted to bring it up, because you may have heard some of the stuff that came out of the DRB hearing, or maybe some residents have reached out to you directly. But I think it's time for a discussion about, is this something you want to hear more about for future growth of our town?
Can I comment to that?
Can I go first?
You can go first, absolutely.
Okay, I think that we need to at least consider the possibility of the town ultimately, someday in the future, taking over municipal water. Not necessarily something I want to do immediately. But I think that we are responsible as a board and as residents of this town to make this town as attractive as possible to new business, future growth, and to make sure that our residents are safe. And that they can turn on the tap and have good, clean, safe water. So if that means that the town ultimately has to find some way to oversee that, take responsibility for it, and perhaps even administrate it, then we should at least consider that possibility. And we need to figure out where, where to even start having the discussion. Okay, I'm done.
All I was going to say is, we were just asked to drill a well up to Crystal Beach. And now you're telling us that some of those wells up through there have proven they have arsenic in them. So I guess, before we talk too much about punching a well at Crystal Beach, we need to, if we're going to run water up through there, let's just hold off. I know probably running water up through there is not going to happen for years and years and years. But I would be so disappointed if we punched a well at Crystal Beach. And, oh, you've got arsenic in that well, too, you know? I would just keep that in the back of our minds, that's all.
Yeah, it's, you know, and I haven't talked to the neighbors. I mean, one of them works for the town across the road. They have problems with their wells, and I don't know if they test them or not. And that's the problem, is there is no requirement that they have to test those. So you can't force anybody to do it, but if they knew that their neighbor's wells got arsenic in it, they might say, well, I better test mine.
It would be good information for the town board and get us, yes.
Yeah. Mr., you have a, I don't know if you want to talk Zoom right now. You've got somebody to hand up.
Let's finish here in front of the board first. Anyone else on the board have a comment? Mary Lee?
How do they know they have arsenic in their water? Where does the arsenic come from?
The natural recurring element, so.
Do, is there any rule or law that anyone having a well has to be tested? I know we do, because we've got cows. The cows have to have clean water, whether you do or not. Is there anything for people that they have to be tested?
Not that, not, as far as I know, as far as the common, or not common, a resident that's not on, like a business that's being regulated by Vermont Department of Health. You're a business, Rob. You have to, you're testing.
I'm on town water. I actually looked this up earlier today when I saw it was on the agenda. And on healthvermont.gov, it's actually, you are responsible for testing the quality of your drinking water and maintaining your well or spring. Private water sources for household use are not regulated by the EPA or the state of Vermont, except if you drill a new well. So if they're existing wells, it's all left up to them.
And I think after they drilled their well, it's only that initial testing. It's not, 10 years down the road doesn't mean there's their.
Also find that if you want to get financing, you're going to wind up getting tested, too.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like over 25 employees, it's considered a public water supply and you have to test it. And I think there's some regulation for subdivisions that use a common well. But isn't that how it works? Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of those around.
Wendy Hollow Trail Park has a private water system. They have to do tests, they have to have a Class 1 or 2 operator there testing and operating that system. Because there's like two wells that feed all that trail.
Serve so many people, they consider it under public rules. But the town's never going to, you know, realize the kind of development that we could, responsible development, the kind of development that is going to add to our grand list and keep our individual taxes stable if we can't utilize some of that property that's underserved by water. I mean, it, there's never going to be another restaurant up here without municipal water. They really suffer hard for that. You know, they're just, most of those wells around the lake are 5 gallons a minute, tops. You know, they're not that productive. A lot of sections of the town really, really need water. I really need water at my business. And it's out of the question right now. I'm not sure what the friction is with the fire districts, but it's not healthy for our community. And I think we really need to have a conversation with the fire districts and say, hey, how do we move this forward in a positive way for the whole community? And if that means that it becomes a single municipal water system, that's probably the best thing.
How much commercial property is there up along the lake shore there that would lend for new commercial development?
I don't know. If someone sold property on the, on the west side of Route 30, on the west side of Route 30, there's very little. It's the stuff that's on the, uh, east side that has more potential for somebody putting something in. Remember where Rinquist Restaurant was there? You know, that property's still there, I mean, it was zoned for a, a restaurant years ago. Someone wanted to open one back up there, um, I don't know if they have the capacity to do such. I don't, I don't remember why Rinquist closed.
But you couldn't put any more commercial up through there, right? I don't believe it's zoned commercial all the way up through there.
I, I, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't recall what the, what, what's zoned up through there, but I, I imagine it's not zoned commercial. Um, unless it was, you know.
Grandfathered in, yeah.
And what is the condition of Fire District One?
Um, they, they do have some infrastructure deficiencies or, um, maintenance issues, and they brought that to the board years, a few years ago when ARPA first came out.
Yep.
Um, the lot, the, the pipe that comes out of the reservoir out of the old Ellis Orchard is old and needs to be replaced. And they, they came to the town saying they had seven hundred thousand dollars in their, um, reserve account, and the project was over a million dollars. So obviously there's a shortfall there. They did apply for a grant, and according to Kerry Fowler, they still haven't heard. But that was like two and a half years ago. So I doubt that that was ever approved.
So if that pipe fails, we all suffer. There's no, no fire service in the whole community.
Right.
The college is shut down.
Yeah, so we probably need to make sure our original infrastructure is sound before we go tacking on anything else to it.
And, and they're planning, they're planning to move forward with this because they know that it's imperative that this gets fixed. Um, when I talked to Kerry, and I'm not, I'm not trying to put him on the spot because he's not here, um, but I asked him, I said, if, if you were to give us up, because it's, we've heard it so many times, like, man, I wish the town would take over water. And, you know, I said, are you willing to, like, you looking to sell this? And, um, it was more like, you know, we're just wishing that someone would take it over. And I said, well, you know how that would work. The town would wanna see what your financials are, money coming in, money going out, your deferred maintenance, you know, all that stuff would all have to be reviewed, uh, before that. But this is something to open a conversation up, because if they say, we're not even interested in it.
What are you gonna do?
It's pretty much, you know.
Yeah, it's done.
We could give them a newgie or something. But, um, if they don't wanna do it, then nothing is compelling to do it.
Well, I think we should start by having that conversation.
Absolutely.
Um, there was somebody on Zoom, her name Melanie Combs, who's had her hand up a long time, I'm not sure, I just wanna forget about her.
In regards to this topic?
I'm not sure her hand was up, that's all I know.
Oh, well, let's, uh, talk to her and see what she has to say.
Ms. Combs, you're up.
I did lower my hand, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think I may keep my comment for a later time. It is in regard to municipal water and sewer, though. But I don't wanna belabor it with the rest of you this evening if you've got things to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I kinda wanted to hear what she had to say, but what's the harm? Okay, go ahead.
Unless she, unless she doesn't want to.
I think she just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't do it. From time to time. The only thing I, it's, it's actually a, a long, single sentence. As you consider municipal water and sewer in town, any expansion, I am hopeful that you will include already-owned municipal properties that do not have municipal water and sewer, the transfer station specifically. And the highway garage doesn't have wa, water. And the beach, I think those are the only three. That's all I wanted, thank you.
I appreciate that. Water, the town highway garage has one or the other, but I don't recall what.
We have municipal water, but we're on a private set system.
That's right, I remember now.
And the transfer station has water potties.
So I'm adding to the test, I'm adding to the task list that, uh, the town manager and myself will initiate, or will do some exploring on how to have a conversation about long-term eventually the town assuming responsibility for the water districts. Okay, that's on my list of things to do.
Can I have one thing on this?
Absolutely, Mr. Heath.
This, just, just to go with this, it's, you know, municipal water, you talk about drinking water a lot, but also fire protection. I probably, you knew where I was going with this. It's, it's fire protection. Um, number one question I get asked every time you get some of these lake properties that are multiple billions of dollars, homes we're selling around the lake now, that's just the way it is. How far is it to your next, your first pressurized fire hydrant? Yes, we are set up to, to work from the lakes and stuff like that, but that's the first question you got asked. Tax rates in, uh, the, the tax rates in town are set off that, and the, why am I drawing a blank on what they?
ISO ratings?
ISO rating. And the last time the ISO rating got, said, you guys are doing a great job around here, if you wanna see that go anywhere else, you gotta expand your fire districts. If you don't have pressurized water, you're not gonna change your ISO rating. So I guess that's fine.
Having been to fires with, with pressurized water adjacent and without, it's much easier with. You've been there, too, Mark.
Has a big impact on insurance rates.
Has a big impact on how fast we can suppress a fire.
Is, is that, did my question just get answered? What is, what are you talking about, ISO ratings? What does that affect?
It sets your insurance rates. It sets the insurance rates. Uh, we have two separate ratings basically in Castleton. It's, one is for in the fire districts.
Okay.
And one is outside of it. Mark probably knows full well what the difference is, because he's unfortunately just outside of the.
Thousand feet away from a hydrant.
He's all, just over that.
Costs us an additional five grand a year.
Okay.
That's a, it's a big thing, and all these, the homes up the lake, you get fifteen hundred feet past the church up here where the last hydrant is, and it, and it jumps into that. It's an, it's a, like a, it's a five if you're in it, and it's a five point five if you're out of it. Unless, the other thing you could do to change that is a paid department, but we ain't going there because there's not enough money in anybody budget. But, but it's, to be a volunteer department at a five and five-five is, that's, we're, we're there, but it's, if you wanna change, you gotta expand the fire districts.
Yeah, I remember, we did a lot of research on that when we built this building, and it did help, but not as much as we had hoped, to improve our ratings. Now, insurance, I don't remember what ISO the acronym stands for, the first word obviously is insurance. I don't recall what the other two words were, and I guess it's not overly important. It's an organization that rates a lot of things, particularly.
First question always, it was, um, how far is, is this place within fifteen hundred feet of a pressurized hydrant?
Sure. All right, um, are we done with municipal water, everybody?
For now.
Okay, let's move on to manager's report. So I'm gonna ask the town manager to give us the bullets, and then we're gonna have a discussion about the salt shed, at least a brief one.
Well, you know what, uh, can we, can I, rather than the high points, um, if we go like page one, anybody have any questions on it? We can.
We can do that.
Uh, that way I'm not bouncing around and if there's.
Or perhaps it might be just as easy to, uh, the only thing I wanna discuss on this is the salt shed. So if anyone else has topics that, they, you've all had a chance to review this, I'm sure. So if you have topics you wanna discuss, now is the time. Mary Lee?
No, I agree with you because we've only got two years. If we're gonna get the salt shed at all, we gotta get going.
Anything else besides that?
No.
Rob?
I'm good.
Mark?
Bob? Well, how quick do you need us to, to do this ARPA funds? That can be skipped tonight?
It, yeah, the, the actual obligation of stuff can be skipped tonight, but discussion, this is for discussion at this point.
I was gonna suggest during, um, select board comments that we put ARPA on the next agenda. As a, let's get in the weeds discussion.
Okay, okay.
The same thing with the TAP grant, that's not time-critical?
Uh, which one, Mark?
On page one. Whether we consider the ARPA funds to go with that?
Yeah, that's not critical at this point. Um, once I get this thing put out to bid, um, this, we get, we kinda get back on updated cost estimate from the contractors, and then we can determine from there if ARPA's even needed. Um, I think my, my, uh, estimates are that, that, that's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, in town required funds. And with, with what we have now and over the next two years, the ninety thousand that goes in there will be pretty damn close. Um, it's, what happens is if something happens to a sidewalk between now and then, and we have to repair something, or, you know, something that would come out of this, that large sum could, could impact it, but that's highly unlikely. Um, and I, yeah, so I don't know if I answered your question, Mark, um, or whoever asked that.
Mark did.
So that one, we, we don't have to act on it immediately, I'd like to be able to come to you with, with some cost estimates so you can see those.
To add a little background.
Discuss lights with that, too?
Yeah, oh, I, I mean, I'll, I'll talk about any, I love to talk, Mark. So if you wanna talk now, I can talk, um, uh, whether or not, you, you have a question about that?
Well, I know that lights were, were not included in this project.
Right, there was, originally they were included, they were five hundred thousand dollars, uh, added cost to the project. Um, so when you start adding up the total project and you take twenty percent of that, well, so if you took just at its face value, which is twenty percent of, um, five hundred thousand, it's.
Hundred.
Hundred thousand, right? So, um, you have to come up with an extra one hundred thousand to make that project whole. And, and again, we have to put it out to bid to, to get some actual numbers back, because, remember, when they did this, this is their, like, worst-case scenario, when they put these cost estimates together, it might not come in as bad as, or say as bad, as high as what they originally put in there. But the longer you wait, you know it's gonna go up, because nothing, price of nothing is going down.
Well, to bring the, the two members of the board up to speed, we're talking specifically about the Main Street project here. And that was, there was a scoping study done, what, two years ago? And there was several different scenarios that were proposed to the, um, select board, and the select board elected to take a particular version, which was sidewalks from, correct me, jump in here if I get something wrong, from North Road to the train station on the north side of Main Street, and from seminar, or from Glenbrook to the, I believe to the rail trail on the south side of the road.
Almost right, I don't wanna bust you out, I mean.
No, it's okay.
It didn't go as far as, on the north side, it didn't go as far as the train station, it went to Mill Street.
Okay. And then, um, and that was the scenario we selected. Um, I don't recall who was in favor of which scenario, and it's not important now. There was, that was a middle-of-the-road one. There was one that was really high-end, which included sidewalks all the way to Sand Hill and lights. And that was not approved by the board. So where we're at now, we're looking at a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar match based on two-year-old numbers. So it's, once again, it'll have to be reevaluated. Any other questions for the town? Mary Lee's all set, Rob's all set, and Bob, any other questions for the town manager?
Not on that, but we're gonna talk about the Salt and Sand Shed right?
We are.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
Mark, any other questions besides the salt shed on, to the town manager based on his report?
No.
Okay.
I did, just so you know, I, I did put an updated ARPA, um, spreadsheet in front of you, um, that had some updated numbers on it, so.
So let's talk about the Salt and Sand Shed. We, we just agreed to rent one, rent a shed for two more years. Which means in two years, two point one years from now, we better have a new shed. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what do we need to do to make that happen?
Um, I, I did talk to, finally got ahold of Mr. Pochop today from V-Trans, um, and we're under the, a belief that if, if I can get the contract back from the engineer, that we can get this thing put out for bid by, by May-June timeframe, and have some numbers, so we'll have some numbers back, which will help. So that means construction probably won't start until we'll be done in the following year. Um, so the, the long pole in the tent is ARPA. If, if we, if this comes back and the cost estimate comes back and it's seven hundred thousand dollars, well, we got almost six. So, so we're, we're pretty in the ballpark, we're pretty close, right? If it comes back at eight hundred thousand, and we've got six, we're just shy of six, um, that might be a different story for you. So on your, on that spreadsheet, I changed the two hundred thousand that was in there for the, um, proposed use of ARPA for, uh, for the, this Salt and Sand Shed, or to a hundred and sixty thousand? Is that what's on the bottom of that?
Yeah, one sixty.
So I took the worst-case scenario of what they, what they told us was eight hundred thousand dollars for the Salt and Sand Shed. And I put twenty percent onto that for cost increases. And that, that was where the hundred and sixty would come from.
So, Mike, the money's important, but we also need to talk about chronology. So where, where do we stand as far as having, the site engineering is already done, I believe?
The, the.
Let me rephrase that, the drainage, the, the stormwater engineering is already done?
Pretty much, um, except for this, the only thing that hasn't been done is the actual footprint of where the Salt and Sand Shed would sit on. Because it, they don't want the runoff from the impervious surfaces, because that, we fell into that three acres of impervious surface up there. So we're creating more impervious surface by putting up a, a barn with a roof on it. So anything that comes off that, um, it has to be part of the stormwater collection treatment process. So that's just something that engineers are gonna figure out. I, I can't tell you what that was gonna look like, but, um, but that's what we need to get this process rolling, is to get the, the contractor hired that's gonna do all this stuff for us, and go out there and get all, all the information and put together the bid packet.
So what do we need to do to make that happen?
The, tomorrow, I told, I have sent Pete Pochop the proposal tomorrow so he can review it and have it out by the end of this week, um, to Fussin' O'Neil, because they were the top number, or top engineer, so they can begin the process.
Okay.
And we're, we're hoping then that they do it, and we put it out to bid, and the bids are back by May, end of May-June timeframe, so that the board is presented with something that they can act on.
Bids for the building or just bids for the engineering for the site?
That is the whole thing.
Okay. So that's what Fussin' O'Neil is gonna do, is put together a packet for the whole building?
Correct.
The whole project?
The whole project.
So we should see that this summer?
Like, we're thinking that we, we'd have something to bring back to the board by June.
Because it sounds to me like we need to have this built in the two thousand twenty-five timeframe, or two thousand twenty-five construction season.
At least we need to start it in the twenty.
Well, we need to move in?
Yeah.
Uh, July one of, uh, twenty-six, right?
Well, the ARPA is, the ARPA expires thirty-one December of twenty-six.
But we, if our lease expires on June thirtieth, we need to be able to move that salt from Ruby's building to a new building before June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six.
Correct.
Which means we need the building built in two thousand twenty-five. And if there's a little overlap there with the Ruby building, well, then he gets a bonus and he gets to use it, that before, you know, before our lease expires. But.
That, that would be, yes, I agree with your statement, um, I think there's some flexibility with that, but just on, to put a mark on the wall.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, let's put a stake in the ground.
So do we need to delegate that hundred and sixty thousand for the sand and salt shed now?
Not till we get the cost estimates back? It has to be done before the Jan, December?
So we gotta remember that we can't touch that hundred and sixty thousand just in case it comes in super high.
We'll know middle of summer, um, where we stand with that.
I can assure you, Mr. Steele, we will not touch that hundred and sixty. There's two of us that don't want that to happen.
Yeah.
We're, there's two people, there's three of us that are dedicated to getting that building built, so, um.
And technically it doesn't have to be built till December two thousand twenty-seven, but it's obviously the lo, the long pole in the tent that Mr. Combs had brought up is, some, at some point in June, by June first of next year, or two years from now, we're gonna have to have, uh, all of our salt out of Ruby's shed.
We need to have a building to put it in.
Well, if we do have to dip into it, oh, it's gotta be completed by twenty-seven.
We have to have the, the funds obligated by the end of this year that we're in now. And they have to be spent two years from now. So we have to have, all the, all the ARPA funds have to be obligated.
They have to be paid for by twenty twenty-six, right? So the project, if we, we need to make sure that it's done by then, in case we have to use ARPA funding.
Well, we need to have a building in place before.
Yeah.
Before, middle of twenty-six anyways, because if we have thirty, you know, a couple hundred tons of salt leftover from that year, which we hopefully do, sometimes we have salt leftover, right? We have to have a building, we have to move it to a new building. We have to move it to a new building. Pardon?
Currently, are the trucks loading at Ruby's?
Just to bring it back to our, they, they load at Ruby's and bring it back to our salt shed by the transfer station, and they fill that one up. So during.
So it's all moved twice?
Correct.
They, they deliver it at Ruby's, we, we have to push it up with the loader at Ruby's, and to the, you know. They deliver it at Ruby's, we have to push it up with the loader at Ruby's, and they try to get in the building for us, but we have to push it up at Ruby's, yeah, so then they have to go to Ruby's, pick it up, when the salt shed's empty on Stasiel Road, pick it up at Ruby's, bring it to our little one, and dump it in.
So you got to bring a loader out to Ruby's?
Yeah, we drive the loader out to Ruby's several times a year.
So this is, this is pretty expensive, the way we're doing it?
Yes.
Yeah?
There's a lot of good reasons to build a new shed. So, and we're deciding that we're going to make it happen.
Agreed. Agreed. But worst-case scenario, Heath, I would ask you to use Ruby's salt, when we get down to crunch time, use Ruby's salt first in that winter of '25, '26. Use that salt over there first. Do you see what I'm saying? So maybe come down to crunch time, we don't have to move a whole bunch of it back to our salt shed. Does that make sense?
We get a stock, we refill the shed, because there probably after winter's only maybe 300 down or lower left of it, so we're going to fill it up in the fall anyway.
Well, at this point, that's a premature discussion anyways, but...
Like, right now, there's about 300 plus ton, roughly, in Ruby's block.
We can say with, we can say with a lot of confidence that the first gating item is the getting the design done by Fussin' O'Neill, and that's underway, or will be underway.
This week, the proposal will be out there, yes.
Okay. Anything else about the salt shed? Are we good?
I think so.
Okay. Anything else on the manager's report?
I'm looking at, we wanted to add, like, asking you guys for actions.
We didn't see anything that we had to do today, but you're welcome to change my mind.
Vehicle replacement, I know, I was asked, I'm on page nine. It says, "I seek select board input on what they want to see moving forward, so I can put together a realistic asset management plan for the highway department." Right? That's already done. It just needs to be out there as a draft for the board to look at, and Rob asked me today to send him that stuff, so I can send that out to everybody. There's no change at this point from what I, I have handed out before, but I, I can certainly email and print it if you want it. So yeah, it's, it's a little easier to read it when it's printed out, of kind of where we're at with the vehicles, their age, and how much money it's going to cost to replace them, and a sample replacement schedule going out 30 years. From the, the greater is that 30-year timeline, replacement timeline for a new one. So, but I have that, and I can send that out by email, and you can read it, and hopefully it makes sense, but if not, at least gives you a chance to ask questions about whatever might be on your mind.
Would you, would you provide that, remember that sheet that I showed you with all, would you provide that to Mr. Brown and to Mr. Steele?
I'll do, I'll send it to all you guys.
Again?
The PowerPoint, I'll send it by email, and if you don't want it, but I printed it, I won't print it for you, but there's, there's the...
I'd like mine printed.
What's that?
I'd like mine printed.
You already have one.
There's two documents. There's an Excel spreadsheet with the money, and the list of the vehicles, and the replacement, and then there's the picture book with a PowerPoint that has every vehicle, its age, its miles, its hours, when it was purchased, its condition...
That's when he gave us a month ago, right?
Yeah, that's what I want those two to have. I agree. They should see that.
Yeah. Not a problem.
Do you still have yours, Mary Lee?
Yes, I do.
Then, I believe it hasn't changed, correct, Mike?
No.
I'm trying to mark on things keep, keep away.
So there's no question on that one. That was not, page nine. I will, I do want to take the time to thank the boards for allowing the funds to build, to complete the emergency operations center, and put in the standby generator up at the highway garage. So thank you for that.
Any idea when that's going to take place, Mike, when they're going to be up and running with the generator up there?
Carrie said after the, after this process of the ground.
Oh, okay.
They've already done a site visit.
All right.
And then on page, we already did that one, that was on page 18, the drinking order discussion, and that seems like all the ones that had action.
So I conclude your report?
It does.
So I see no purchase orders, so we can move on to warrants.
I'm going to include the following warrants. 0311R for $3,180. Warrant 0227 for $25.98. Warrant 0229, $6,519.53. Warrant 0307, $33,005.18. Warrant 0311, $89,286.79. Warrant 0229P, $17,610.20. Warrant 0307P, $18,367.74.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to approve the warrants. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
That's a mouthful.
Yes, it has, but this is a short list, too. These aren't right. These are the originals, too. Oh, so, what you're going to have to do, guys, and this is going to be inconvenient but necessary, is Mr. Brown can pick one spot, and Mr., um...
Mr. Steele.
Mr. Steele. Holy cow. Sorry, senior moment there. Sorry, Rob. I'll have to pick another spot for, in place of Mr. Lemey and Mr. Mark, and cross their name out, write, print your name in, and then sign them, and we'll make sure this doesn't recur. The warrants have the previous luck board members' names on them.
We weren't sure who was going to show.
[laughing]
Like, I'm not sure about this.
I don't know, Mike, that's not even a good story. So I wouldn't stick to it.
No, that's all I got right now. I'm sleeping right now. What's, he isn't taking it. Oh, your son's an X?
What?
That's what it looks like.
That was for the transfer speech you asked me to add.
Yeah, well, I'll get you for that comment, too, back.
Yeah. I remember once when Joe Bruno asked me why my signature was the way it was.
Did he say?
Supply petty officer on the USS Valdez, "Sign your name literally several thousand times a day."
Oh, God.
For six months. You get pretty quick at it.
Joe gave me a hard time over my signature, too, so don't feel bad.
My signature got quick, and it stayed that way.
I think mine are pretty good. You can read them.
Mine got fast, and it stayed that way, you know, just, I never changed it to anything else after I got out of the Navy.
I signed a million fishing licenses back when we had to do them all in paper.
Oh.
So now my signature is literally just a scribble.
Yeah, I used to be able to write well, and now you never do it.
You all should be doctors. I don't know why pharmacists can even read their...
That's a piece. I got a prescription for people over here.
Oh, God. Rob, can you make sure there's seven when you finally sign it?
Yep.
Why do you carry that red folder around for? There's nothing in it.
Um, no, the red folder is all the supporting documents for the check warrants.
Oh, okay.
So if you have any questions about a specific item in the quest, in the check warrant, the answer is here.
I've always wondered why you've been carrying this red folder.
And I asked our new accountant if he felt that that was still necessary, and his answer was that it's a very good double check on everything, and that he would prefer it stay in place. So I said, "Okay." I thought it was cumbersome to have to carry that around, but at this point in time, our new accountant felt that it was, at least in the short term, was not something that he was willing, or thought would be wise to change. Do you agree with that, Mike?
Yeah. I mean, if someone does have a question, it does provide the...
Yeah. But he said it's a way of making sure the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed in his organization, you know, within the accounting office.
I can't get back, Bob. By the sound of his signature, it's got to be worse.
I could have told you, Mary.
I can hear it, but...
Don't want to look at it, Rob. Don't want to...
I could sign it neater for you, but then you'd probably get questioned on if it's my signature or not.
Just use the same one you used last time you sent him the check?
Yeah.
Mark, you missed one.
That happened to me four or five years ago. I went to the bank with my paycheck, and the girl at the bank goes, "That's not your signature." I go, "I just signed it." She goes, "I cash your check every week."
I got a call at the bank.
Mark missed this one. He hasn't signed it yet.
You missed a warrant, and you will walk over there and sign it, please?
I missed one?
You did. That's what Mary Lee says, I'll believe her.
Is that where you want it?
Well, yeah, she said it, and I'm going to deliver.
Yeah, I filled it out and signed, I filled out part of it, and you can fill out the rest of it. I didn't put in the email addresses and the phone numbers. I just wrote the...
You've got all that?
Yeah, they might be.
So you don't need this?
The original's in here.
Okay, okay.
I, I signed it as the select board chair, and I wrote in the two names, and you got to fill in the rest of the blanks.
Do you count them?
You got all that information, Mike, you do, don't you?
Karen does.
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is, we got seven? Thank you, sir. That's one of the places where you just get out of their way and let them do it?
Yeah, yeah.
As Melanie would say, "I ask for the time, not how to make a watch."
Okay, anything else? Okay, let's move on. Do we have, and I know we do, needs for executive sessions. We do, right?
Well, 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 well...
Oh, that's right, I skipped like three things.
Well, what happened to the select board comments? Not that I have any. Is that on there?
It is. I skipped it because it was on the back.
Oh, yeah.
All right, warrants for approval, we did. Select board comments, Mary Lee, anything?
No.
Rob?
I'm good.
Bob?
I asked you for this already.
Okay.
The roster on...
Everybody.
Yeah, yeah, the police department, and I'd like to know who's on our fire department.
Karen's working on it. They, Wednesday night, they worked on their roster for us.
Okay, okay.
So it's just, we're just collecting up the information. We're assuming we'll have everything back by the next meeting.
All right. It just doesn't make you forget, that's all.
And now we just had some new appointments.
Yes, yes.
I filled that in myself here.
Yes, we are actively working on it.
Thank you. That's all, it's late, so.
Anything else, Bob?
No.
Mark?
Could I ask for a discussion on our next agenda?
Sure.
I'd like to have a discussion about short-term rentals.
Okay.
Please breeze over it. Think about it for the future.
What I can provide the board is, Mary Jo's already worked on it. She went to the sites that have short-term rentals, and she's counted how many there are in town, and we've got some more sample ordinances of what other towns in Vermont and New Hampshire have used to help regulate short-term rentals, so I can provide all that in your packets.
I've looked at Rutland Towns, and Killingtons, and a couple others. Rutland Town seems to have...
This is pretty good.
Advice. It's a registry, so you know what's out there. Do you have any idea how many are in our town?
I do not. I know it's more than I think it is, or you know what I'm saying?
Any day that you look at, look for an Airbnb, you'll find about 25.
There was 117 in Castleton, I think, when I looked the other day. It might be, they might have been doubled up, but there was a long list.
I think we should have a registry of what's out there. I think that in some towns, in village sections, it's only legal in an owner occupied.
Mark, I hate to cut you off, but can we have that discussion next?
We'll have that next week, two weeks.
Well, yes, we can talk about the next agenda. I have, is that all you have, Mike?
That's all.
Okay.
Mark?
Mark? It's all right.
Are you tired?
Yes, actually. I also messed up and forgot to turn the clocks back, or I had in my shop, so I thought it was 4:30. I was heading to the house, and it was 5:30.
Well, you were here on time.
If I wasn't at the town office, I would have been still sitting there when the meeting started.
It was, yeah, so I got a little hectic there for a few minutes, but everything's good. All right, I have no comments. Brief, keep, okay. We're going to change the title from brief recap and items for follow-up to action items, and we have, Mike Jones is going to do rules and update on the rules and procedure and circulate for signature. I have to do the DRB research with VLCT, and I'll coordinate that with you, Mike. Uh, Mark Brown's going to chair a subcommittee for the feasibility of the village school, and Water District is also for me and Mike to have a discussion on the process of having a conversation about the town, ultimately taking that over. And that's all I got. Anyone else got anything? Two things, Mary Lee?
We have two more. You were going to also seek, or he was going to advertise to see if he could fill the rest of the DRB and the rest of the recreation. That's it.
Anything else we've forgotten? Action items, things that we need to go do.
Um, you're going to invite both Water Districts and the head of both Water Districts in.
What I was going to do, Bob, is I was going to talk to them to make sure they want to come before a public meeting.
Okay.
And see if they're interested in doing that for us.
Okay. Yeah, Mike and I are going to start fleshing out a plan, and we'll come back to you with that before we take any action. Anything else? Okay. I would entertain a motion for executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
With the board and the town manager?
Yes, with the board and the town manager.
At, forgive me for this, but 9:27.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.